Welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting of the Trumbull Housing Authority on February twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five. If you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty-
Justice for all.
Thank you. Barbara, can you do the roll call, please?
Kathy McGannon.
Here.
Laurel Anderson.
Here.
Maureen Bova.
Here.
Sarah Fleeger.
Here.
And Charlene Peterson.
Here.
Okay, if I could have a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty eighth.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty, twenty five.
Thank you.
Charlene, second.
Second by Charlene?
Yep.
Can I take this by unanimous consent if nobody has any changes or additions and deletions? And everybody was here? Oh, no, no. Sarah was not here at the last meeting. So would just be the four. How many are we? Five of us?
One abstent.
Five with one abstention. Okay, thank you. All right, Director of Finance, report, please.
Hey.
But I could ever.
No, don't put that.
Yeah, you look good.
Good evening, everyone. I have an update on the Congregate Tenant Selection Plan and Lease. We are going to have a special meeting next Friday to have a discussion with the tenants at three o'clock. Paulette and Anne will be speaking with them to go over and see if they have any questions. I have had some contact with them. Most of them signed the lease and sent it back to me. So I think what they need to do is read it and see if there's any questions. So we're gonna do that again. The maintenance charge policy was distributed at the tenants' meeting on two twenty one last Friday and then delivered to everyone as of this Monday. We'll have a discussion in March at the tenants' meeting. And March twentieth at Stern Village, they will be receiving their packets on March third. The application that we were working on for Congregate, we worked with Jackie and Anne, and that is complete. And now it's on the website, so everybody is using the same application. Employee handbook is still with the attorney. They recommended a shorter version. And I'm waiting for a recommendation for a different version from the attorney. She said, I went a little bit too robust and carried too many items in there. So she said, you don't really want too much information on that, a little more vague. And for some of the policies would be, would be better on that. So I'm going to redo that for a bit.
Were you on volume seven or volume eight?
I think three B. We're going A, B, C. So hopefully, I will have some version for that next meeting. Warranties, I did send to Paulette and Kathy and Laurel, I believe. I didn't know if that was distributed. But I did have the warranty on the boiler and the hot water heaters. They were installed in August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one. We had a full year warranty until eight seventeen, two thousand and twenty two from A and B. And then we also have a ten-year limited warranty on the boiler and hot water tanks from Lock Bar. And A and O Smith has a limited warranty on the hot water heater. So if there's any-
Sorry, I don't think I sent that out. I will, I will forward it to, to the rest of the board.
Yeah, we have-
To the board.
No problem. And that's at the Congregate. We did have a problem with a blower on the hot water heater that was not covered, but minimal cost. Maureen has looked over the billing and said, not too bad. So we continue to monitor that. And if anything is covered under that ten-year limited warranty, we will definitely take care of that through the warranty. We are working on the repairs and rehab. We just met with Hiller. Jackie and Paulette will probably go into a little more detail for that. We did review the heat pump quotes for maintenance. And again, Paulette and Jackie will probably go over a little more. And the last one was the start of the increase process for the Village and Congregate. They had a meeting last Friday at both places and did start the discussion on rents and congregation services and their base rent.
Getting comments on?
I would let Paulette and Jackie had a pretty robust meeting on that as well. So yeah, they can probably fill you in a little bit more on that while trying to follow that.
Questions for Dawn? No, then we'll move. Oh, Jason, welcome. We'll move on to the Congregate report on the Congregate.
Good evening.
Evening, Anne.
So I was, we're eighty-three point three percent occupied and sixteen point sixty, sixty-seven percent unoccupied. And all units ready to move it that haven't been identified where we can put our waiting list, folks. And talking about the waiting list, number one is signing a lease on Friday. Number two is to confirm a couple of items before she can, then she can sign the lease. Number three, I'm reviewing the documents for a lease signing with him next week. Number four and five, I've called for interviews. Number six and seven are in the process of getting all their documents to me. And today, and this week, we got three new applications. One was a walk-in. So there's a lot going on. And on a happier note, I know you guys always want to hear the activities. And so a week, two weeks ago, it was, of course, National Cheddar Cheese Day. And Yorada made nice little charcuterie boards. Yep, it was, it was primarily the celebration of cheddar cheese, but she put on some meat and fruit. It was, they really liked that. And we had a raffle for a T-shirt and a kitchen towel. The kitchen towel said, you get a, what, great? I'm, what was it?
I know, grilled cheese socks.
That, we had grilled this week.
No, that's for Tortilla Day.
Oh, right, right. The towel said something about, I'm just great. I had a grater. Sorry, there's a long way to go for that. And the, the big cheese was the shirt. This week, it's National Tortilla Chip Day. And we already have the food and we getting a couple of, you know, little raffle prizes again. And everyone's kind of getting along.
That's good.
Not good, not good, yep. And yeah, it seems to be getting smoother. Getting what? Oh, yes, definitely smoother, yep.
Anne, as far as the units that are available, how many actual units are ready to be rented?
Six.
You've got six, okay. Okay.
Five on the second floor and one on the first floor.
And you think they'll fill?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
In the next couple of weeks.
Excellent.
We get people in there.
I'm sorry.
How soon can we get people in there?
So I think that's what she was saying in the beginning. So we have a lease signing on Friday, then we have a potential second lease signing on Friday. We're just awaiting some documents. Then the two others are interviewed, and then there's one more that if he gets all of his documents, we would be doing that on March third. So those are three, and then two in process, and then one last one, just updated documents are needed. And then we can fill all units. But that's why she said all units are identified already.
Okay, excellent. Very good, very good, very good. And how is the waitlist itself? Are we?
We have twenty-five on the waitlist.
Six, sorry, twenty-six.
Okay.
But there are three additional going on, so that would take us three months.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for Anne from in? Okay. Lisa?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Just a few things on tomorrow, February twenty-sixth at ten thirty a.m. There will be a presentation from Dr. Cornelia Morris on seasonal depression, the signs, the symptoms and treatment. It's gonna be ten thirty at the Village, and it's gonna be twelve o'clock at the Congregate. I'm trying to start back up with doing the same presentations at the Congregate to see if people start to come. I'm doing it at twelve o'clock and trying to encourage people to just come into the dining hall, whether they're having lunch or not, to listen to the presentation. On March eleventh, there's gonna be a presentation on the ten warning signs of dementia. It's gonna be at twelve noon at the Village, and lunch is gonna be served. That one, I'm gonna schedule at one o'clock at the Congregate because they already have lunch. So I have to schedule them apart, but hopefully people will show up. We have March twenty-seventh, Cooking with Dawn, Cooking for One with Dawn, which everybody loves. And another resident that has gone to, as a culinary artist, is also gonna assist her, which is really nice. In April, we'll be doing a presentation on spring cleaning. The presenter's gonna bring different spring cleaning items with them. And also, he's gonna present those things that you can discard as far as paperwork, how long you're supposed to keep. Things, so they know what they can discard, hopefully to try to help them determine what they can herd.
I'm sending my husband.
Okay, and I want to hear that, too, so. Stuff that also at the Congregate. The dates haven't been determined yet. I'm in the process of getting the dates. There's a, that are coming to me because of United Healthcare. Not, may not be contracting with Heart for Health. They're still in the negotiation process, so people are coming because they're getting letters. But, but they're still in the negotiation process. They just have to give sixty days' notice to Medicare beneficiaries according to CMS law. So hopefully, they'll come to some type of agreement, so it doesn't have the impact that it will have on Medicare beneficiaries. If, in fact, they don't come to some type of settlement. Also, last but not least, Congressman Jim Heinz will be speaking at Trumbull Housing Authority either in March or April. I'm in the process of working with his scheduler in Washington to schedule the speech engagement. He'll be focusing on the cuts to Medicaid and how the cuts will impact at the Trumbull Housing Authority because it's gonna have a large impact based on what's being said now, so that they understand, you know, how they will be affected. And that's my report.
There are a lot of concern from the residents about Social Security and Medicare and Medicaid.
Yes, there's a lot of questions, and there's a lot of things that they really don't understand. They know the extent of how it's gonna affect them.
Be nervous about it.
Right, and going down the pipe, they need to know how, how, you know, it's gonna affect their food stamps, their medical care, and things of that sort. I did contact the Agency on Aging on the Connecticut Home Care Program for Elders because I was doing a lot of referrals. And I have some more referrals to do for in-home care, and I just wanted to make sure that they were still accepting referrals for the Connecticut Home Care Program for Elders, and they assured me, yes, they are, that we can continue to send them referrals for in-home care. So I don't know, you know, what's gonna change on that level either. And they don't know yet either, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions for Lisa? No. Okay, we'll move on to Property Manager Jackie.
Hi, good evening. Okay, so I'll start with our waitlist. Our waitlist right now is at fifty-three. We do have a couple of lease signings coming up. We have one this Friday and three scheduled for March. In terms of work orders, this, between the first of January till now, we've completed sixty-six work orders. And things to be done in that same timeframe, we have thirty-nine that are pending. However, I ran a report from the first of two thousand and twenty-four, and we have fifty-two that are still outstanding that are project work orders. And that is based on inspections and stuff like that. So I'm hoping that that list continues to decrease as we get warmer weather, that things can actually get done and put those projects to close out. We are at an occupancy rate of ninety point thirty-two, and we are unoccupied at nine point sixty-eight. To put into perspective a little bit, I ran the report a little differently. So like I mentioned, we have four lease signings coming up. Two were housed in February, but then we had two move-outs in February. So we're right back where we started. And then one of the units that are on the report that we run, we haven't gotten keys yet, so we technically can't touch it until we receive the keys. But the person unfortunately passed, and we ended her participation with our program. And that's it for me today. Any questions? Yes, Laurel?
Jackie and Anne?
Yeah.
And you make your reports in the future. I wonder, in addition to giving us the percentages, if you could actually say the number of units?
Sure, I could tell you.
So we don't have to do the math.
Yeah, I could tell you that right now. We've got a hundred and sixty-eight occupied and then eighteen at unoccupied. And then for Anne, it's thirty and six. Any other questions?
Of the eighteen that are unoccupied?
Yep.
How many are, are actually ready for somebody to move in if lease signings, whatever, you know, how many are ready?
Six, with four already lease signings. So we have two just-
So six available. And you have four lease signings. Okay. And the other dozen?
So three of them are at our restoration project, so we cannot touch them because those are CNAs. And then four were identified with Hiller today. We did not walk around, and we should be receiving quotes from him so we can get a better understanding of the conversation we had last meeting to spend that money to put in, back into our units.
Refresh their memory.
Yeah. Oh, and I forgot to mention this, but Jason and I have also been working on getting credits and owed money that residents have, you know, whether missed a payment or a fee or whatever it is. So him and I have been able to meet and try to get a balance there, so I'm hoping that we're doing a good job, but I'm hounding people down.
How many of the remaining five units are repairable by our maintenance?
I could tell you that right now. I believe it's three. But I have it written down. Yeah, three.
And is that on deck for, to be completed soon?
Oh, yeah. So they're what, in one unit right now, but they did finish off the Congregate's last unit, so that's why now they're moving into the Village. And they're halfway done with the one that they're in now, and then the two others, I've already scheduled when, which one to go next because it's a little bit easier than the other. So I've already spoken to Renee about what's the timeframe and stuff, so we're thinking maybe a month and a half if nothing comes up, so fingers crossed.
Okay, thank you.
I'd be so happy to see them all filled. I know it's a process. I know it's a process.
Yeah, and then like we have unexpected move-outs, right? Well, one was expected, then we had one unexpected, literally unexpected move-out. And it just kind of like, we housed and then it went right back.
You're dealing with a fragile population, too, so we're thinking happen any time and, you know, you're one step forward, two steps backwards. It's just nature of the game.
Absolutely. And we're also thinking, well, Dawn and I have had a conversation with Paulette about possibly opening up our waitlist pretty soon just because the amount of, well, not the amount, the lack of response that we're getting this time around has really allowed us to continue to withdraw people. And, you know, whether they didn't get the packet or they, you know, the deadline and stuff like that. And we're like, the tenant selection plan says if you don't, you don't, and you're gonna have to reapply, right? So that is what we're putting into action. So we're thinking maybe, I don't want to like put it out there, but maybe six months, we might be opening it up again just because of how fast it is. I could turn around and put applications out this time and get a bunch of applications in return, and then put that six months to nine months. But it really, the two last, kind of like, application blasts that I've had, I've only received about seven of those. So that's twelve each time. So.
Anyone have questions for Jackie?
I think Ms. Dawn wants to say something.
Yeah, I, I just also want to recognize that we do get calls on a regular basis asking when we're going to open our waitlist again. And I always tell them, call back at the end of next month. And if we have an idea on when we will be opening, you'll have an idea when you should apply, and it'll be in the paper. And we're trying to keep also our other cohorts that we send messages out to encourage people to apply. That, again, try us back in a month, don't hesitate to call. And if they aren't interested or they can't wait, maybe try the Congregate. And, you know, we're trying to refer people as they come in. Stratford just closed their application process, and they had two days, it was only open for two days, and their max was four hundred. So, yeah. So they must be going through the same thing if they're applying, have four hundred in two days. We had, you know, about two fifty in about a week. So we're really trying to keep people in the loop and reach out to different support people to let them know we'll be in touch as soon as we know when we're gonna open our waitlist. So we are in constant contact with people about that.
Okay. And just last, I promise, last one, but we've been, Dawn and I, through, well, through Dawn, I've been able to do some of the training through our database, the PHA web server. And it has, it has allowed me to understand the portal that PHA Web is, the database already has. So this time around, I'm hoping that we do our applications all portal, no more paper. You apply online, and it just like a click of a thing, and then everything gets into the system. Jason, you're smiling, don't do that. And then everything is updated. I mean, the amount of work, paperwork-wise, would decrease by like fifty percent. All the documents can be sent in, everything can be tracked on the database, so I've done all of those trainings in the last couple of weeks. They're like, like our parts of the training. So I think next week is the last part of like getting all of the documents that are needed and stuff like that, and how to enroll people. So I'm hoping that for the next time we are gonna apply, it's all portal and no more of this paper stuff.
My only concern is there are people that don't have access to a computer.
For that reason, we will still accept paper. Remember, she's young. We like the paper for some of it, so we're gonna keep the paper available and out there.
Jackie, I would have to apply on paper. I can show you how.
I don't want to learn anything new. No room for new learn.
No, but we could do reasonable accommodations, and everyone can come, and I can apply for them. I mean, it's a thing.
As soon as she mentions the word portal to some of them, they're already gonna be here with your paper application.
Oh, the youth of today. Well, it's crazy because the, the amount of information, it also relates to our tenants, and they can do everything in the portal and pay us and do all that. Like, I would love for us to get them. Trying here.
You just keep dreaming, Jackie. It's good to have the dream.
And we let her continue to think that, which is why we always pat her on the back.
All right, anybody have any other questions? All right, we'll move on to our Treasures report.
Okay. Here are the highlights for January, up to, through January thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five. For the seven-month period ended January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, the authority had an operating gain before capital activity and depreciation of eighty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars, of which a hundred and three thousand, two thirteen is attributable to Stern Village and a loss of nineteen thousand, eight eighty-five to the Congregate. For Stern Village, operating results are right at budgeted surplus despite rental revenue not meeting budgeted amounts by twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars, largely due to the ongoing vacancies. Expenses are under budget overall with no significant cost overrun. I like reading this this month. For Congregate, expenses continue to be close to budgeted amounts with no significant new overruns. The loss for the year continues to be due to vacancies with revenue losses now exceeding twenty-five thousand dollars due to vacancies in excess of budgeted amounts. You can see the review of the tenants' accounts receivable below. When I was speaking with Paulette, she's taking care of all the tenants that are behind a few dollars or over one month. She's working, she's been working on that. The Congregate's the same. Tenant balances at the Village continue to be investigated and cleaned up with fewer residents carrying small balances this month. The only significant rent balance is in the Congregate and relates to one resident that has paid current but owes two and a half months back of rent. The overall cash position of the authority, including reserves, is eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars, including the nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars of the SSHP development funds pending use for unit remodeling. And a snapshot of the program, as you can see, the balances are below. You can see a schedule of the operating cash activity for the period. And the cash position for each property is within cash management amounts with Village in good position to fund unit rehab work with current excess cash in the coming months. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start with Laurel. Questions, Laurel? Sarah? Charlene? Jason, any comment? Any?
I mean, it's said there, but the main comment is, I know that it's an expense side issue. We'll put it that way. Obviously, the challenge has been all the vacancies and the turnover there. Again, turnover, you can't really predict all that well or control, right? A lot of times, they're, they're leaving because they have to, or maybe haven't even decided to. But it's still putting an enormous strain, especially on Congregate, right? On, on the good news of things, cash in Village is over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars now, so it's even higher than this report's saying. A lot of that is, needs to be spent by the end of June. So if we, we're gonna roughly throw that at about fifty thousand or so, forty, fifty thousand, plus the nineteen thousand. So you're looking at about sixty thousand dollars in, not even just free cash, but cash that needs to be spent. And we know there's a need to get those units redone. So all, all signs align to that. This is, is where I'm gonna keep stressing. And I might even say to the board that you might even consider going a little lower in the operating cash because you can, you might not have to dip into reserves, but, you know, you have some flexibility in the, the checking account to go big, you know, do, do an extra unit, depending on what the cost is. And just kind of try to think about how you can get that going, knowing that this is, you know, the worst time, obviously, for staff because there, it's research time, it's budget time, et cetera. And that, then I was, that was gonna lead me to budget talk, but I don't know if that's an agenda item or not. I don't think it is. So I don't know if you want to, me to continue talking on that, or if there's another line item, but I did want to mention that process real quick. But I don't know if anybody has questions or comments on what I already said. Kathy looks stunned, silence.
Not happens, it doesn't happen often, Jason. Silence is not my strong suit. I would like to see us get as many of those units back online. It's a lot of money to be losing every month with the MFP. So I, I mean, I think that's definitely a goal to, to get those units done and occupied.
Yeah, I, I just think there's ongoing trepidation about pulling the trigger there because it's such a big cost. You know, and, you know, obviously, I don't want to just say, oh, it's forty thousand dollars a unit, and all of a sudden, everybody- And all of a sudden, everybody's been saying do three units and now it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And the board's gonna say, whoa, 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 wait a second. Which, which you rightfully should, because they shouldn't pull the trigger before telling you first. Uh, but that just gets the process kind of, they just need to work through that process, frankly. Uh, not to speak for them, but um, so on the budget real quick. Um, we've been running through the numbers as far as what we thought. I know they've had their conversations uh, with the tenants, although the, from what I heard, the congregate conversations were not all that fruitful or, or involved, involved, I guess I'll say. Um, that one is going to need probably a higher rent increase than I originally thought. Um, I think we had originally said fifty dollars. Um, I'm probably recommending closer to a hundred. Um, but my, my point hopefully is next month is I'm gonna put, uh, staff has already said that they're gonna look about their side of things. You know, what they need to have done, et cetera. I'm gonna put a preliminary budget together for them to look at and then to present to the board at next meeting. That'll be preliminary, because we won't know the revenue side of things. Um, but I can estimate, right? We can get decent. And then the actual approved budget would be at April's meeting. So if somewhere in between, if more discussion needs to be had, we, you know, we have that time. But that's just kind of the process we're trying to get to. Um, March, get one together. Staff is already looking at expenses, they're gonna go into it more type of thing. I'll have something that they can kind of have in their hands um, at some time next month. Great time for me too, but it is what it is. Um, and then, you know, you have something next meeting and then April, you know, vote on something. Vote to approve, basically.
I don't know if you have the number off the top of your head. How many people in the congregate pay full, full price?
I think it's five as of now. Um, I don't know if that one person that left was one or not. I know, no. I think it's five.
Okay.
So that means, right, only five of them are likely gonna get a rent increase.
Right, the rest would be subsidized and.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
When, when they met, when the staff met with um, the tenants, were they told fifty dollar raise or increase? And now if it's a hundred, are they gonna have to meet with them again?
No, well, was said, or sorry, Paulette, but it, what was said was it was a sixty percent raise on core and a forty percent on base rent.
Okay, and does that come up to a hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
We told them, we basically worded at the worst case, right? This is what we think we might have to do. Um, with, with two accepts, I say we, I wasn't really there, but uh, obviously the state has to approve it, right? They, we can't ever go higher than that. We can only go lower, basically. So the hundred dollars would be the worst case for them, so to speak. And then the fifteen dollars was the village.
And what, what was the response at the congregate?
They were not happy. They felt that um, the staff should state to the state of Connecticut that um, the rent is too high for the money um, that they are receiving. They feel that when they get the cola raise um, every January is, is given and is taken away. So they feel that something has to be done and they feel that once I give the minutes to the state, that should be mentioned to let them know that they are struggling financially and they just can't deal with another raise. But the ones that are saying it's the ones that can affect.
Are the ones that don't get the raise.
Right, so the ones who are getting the raise and not saying anything.
They hear a hundred dollars, they think it's going to that, you know, somebody that's paying five hundred, just.
And I, I do remember somebody getting very emotional and was told it's not going to impact you at all and they just didn't grasp.
Oh, they don't understand until they realize after their certification. Um, and when they see what their rent is and they figure next year, it, you're gonna see it doesn't affect them, but you can't, you cannot convince them through speech. They have to see it on paper to what they pay.
I'm more concerned about the five that pay the full, the full.
Yeah.
You know.
I think also when um, the base rent um, gets an increase, those that are already paying, you know, base rent, they're the, that's the emotional person, because she got um, a raise because of base rent and because of cola. Right, so when that increase went up, I think that's where she felt it most and she, that's when she was like, I just don't know how.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
No, I worry about, I, you know.
Yeah.
It's as far as numbers, for what it's worth, the hundred hours, again, not small, six and a half percent increase. Um, as we probably know, there's a lot of things that are going up by more than six and a half percent.
Yeah.
Uh, securities, seven or eight percent, that's all minimum wage driven. And the food contract, seven percent. So those are the two main contracts at the congregate. It's, I don't know what to do with those numbers, other than we get creative and I know if I've, I've said this before. Um, nobody really likes this. I can see why, is there are still some agencies that uh, hire, I'll see if, if that's the right word, uh, tenants, like at the village, we'll say, to sit as attendants during the day on weekends to save on money. Um, I know the liability on that, that was the first thing shot down by Laurel, I think, when I mentioned that two years ago. Um, again, I'm not suggesting that and, and this would really be based on your um, assessment and maybe even Maureen would know if there are a handful of residents that you could count on to sit there for two hours at a time or something. I know, and, and again, I would say it would only be during the day, you would never do it overnight. But anyways, uh, those are just some of the things that I know others still had done, not many, don't get me wrong. Because of the administrative impact of that, it's, it's tough, right? To try to juggle people to make sure that they're accountable, they're there and something bad doesn't happen and it's not on you type of thing. So I completely get the risk side. I'm just sharing what I know others try to do to keep the cost down, because that, the security's the highest cost, it's even higher than food.
I don't know.
I know they have, like, most of them have, like, what they'll do is the office closes at four and they'll have residents stay until six. So they just like save an hour and a half a day, every day during the week. Again, the administrative nightmare on that probably isn't even worth it in my mind. Anyways, I just know others have done it and continue to do it. What are you saving fifty bucks a day, I think?
Yeah.
But again, you add that up, that's a big number.
Now, we'll see how this goes.
Um, so Jason, um, and Paulette and staff, um, Sarah and I would like to arrange a meeting with you all prior to the next board meeting, if we're going to be presented with a budget uh, sometime in March, when uh, you have at least a tentative budget for us to look at, but we'd also like to review the first six months of the fiscal year with you. Um, and um, if other commissioners want to sit in, we're gonna have to make it a public meeting. But uh, we can certainly do that. So we will be in touch with all of you um, to set up a, uh, an appropriate time to do this.
Okay, yeah, so we begin our research, I just wanted to make you aware, we begin at least March fourth um, for both the village and it continues all the way to the end of the month until, because we start at the congregate on the twenty-fourth. Um, the only days that we don't do recertifications are Fridays and then we're done by three thirty, the latest.
Okay, if the board is voting on the budget in April, early April is fine. Okay, but just to give you a heads up, this is what we're gonna ask you to do.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we go back to Jason's comment about spending money on the potential rehabs? Could you, uh, again, Jason, say about how much you think we have and what timeframe do we need to vote and spend?
Um, well, about, I guess about sixty thousand of it would be a minimum you'd have to spend.
Okay.
You have, you have a hundred and seventy thousand about in the bank account. Our cash management basically says you only really, really need to hold about eighty thousand. So that's ninety thousand dollars in the bank account, spendable, right?
Okay.
In excess of what you need for current bills. And that would be without obviously touching the reserves, which obviously is good. Um, so sixty thousand required, ninety thousand easily available, I would say.
And that's all by June, correct?
The sixty thousand by June, yes.
So it has to be done and paid for by June or just?
Incurd. Incurd.
Incurd.
So the work has to be done, you don't have to actually cut the check.
Gotcha.
Do we have an estimate from that outside company doing rehabs on the ones that still need to be done?
But I also, he's gonna keep it at the same price, right? But he is gonna provide new quotes as well. And sorry, Dawn was gonna.
I know, that's exactly, when we met today, he's going to work up quotes. We had some other concerns on some of the projects he had previously giving us uh, quotes for, but we want him to go a little bit deeper with some of the real problems, so he's not just masking something. So he's going to reevaluate a couple of the um, apartments. But we will not have any problem spending sixty thousand.
No problem.
Units, but we will get a, a breakdown for you before we do anything.
Right.
We're just working on the nineteen right now.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Paulette?
Good evening, everyone. Um, going back to the certification for the village and the congregate, um, then both meetings went well, um, especially at the village. Um, they had a lot of questions. They were very respectful towards staff and their peers. Um, they were just kinda confused between the base rent and the cola raise. They didn't quite understand that, that the, both of them were like hand in hand and we had to explain to them that that's just separate monies, you know, some of them didn't know what a cola was. So uh, we had to explain that as well. Um, but I think that um,
With who?
We, we, I said to them, if they need someone to talk to in the office concerned this rent increase, by all means, stop by the office because they're quite worried uh, with the rent going up because they're on fixed income and with the three point two cola, you know, they receive it, then it's taken out, you know, they don't see it again and so they have a lot of expenses. And the same for the congregate, they did mention they have a lot of expenses and um, they just don't have it, okay?
Well, U I is one of the biggest expenses that they're having and the money for their healthcare, which, which has gone up. Plans they had last year are not the same for this year for them. They're, they have a lot more out of pocket drug, you know, prescription drug uh, costs of, I've had a few of them talk to me and they're actually showing me their bills. And when you talk about a rent raise, um, they sit there and say, where, you know, for some. But yes, that's their major concern.
And when you have one healthcare E N O being um, out of the program, then you gotta switch over to another carrier.
What just happened.
And, and the thing is, then they have to um, you know, adapt to their plans and sometimes it's, when it comes to finances, it, it doesn't work out for them. So it's a lot of variables that they're going through, it's a lot of worries that they go through as well. And I do understand because they're on fixed income and they have to try to make um, ends meet um, every month and it's difficult for them, especially with residents with cars, you know, they gotta pay for the gas, they gotta pay for this, gotta pay for that. So um, it's understandable, but I did say to them to come to the office that they need um, staff to talk to them. Um, and that's basically, that's all we can do. The minutes and the flyers and the attendance sheet uh, will be going out to the as, um, asset manager and also to Tony Foo to let them know that we have a meeting concerning the possible rent increase um, that is ma- mandated for me to do, so I take care of that the early part of March. Um, see. I also informed the tenants what's needed for um, the rent recertifications, even though we do this every year for those who are seasoned. They tend to forget and from year to year, you know, they um, mental capacity will change. So the thing is, they would tend to forget what to have for the um, on March fourth when it starts. Um, I'm, I'm sure Jackie and I will have a box of forward receipts that I told them of. And we told, don't bring a box of receipts, you gotta add them all up, but sometimes they was, they don't have a calculator, have an adding machine. So here we are, we're gonna start adding a lot of things up. So we know we're gonna have a lot of challenges, um, doing the recertification, it's gonna be uh, long months for us and, you know, and the thing is, we just gonna try to get it done. And hopefully we don't have any of, like last year, um, especially at the congregate, where uh, a few residents were um, quite um, very upset where they were actually, they were crying because of the rent. So we, hopefully we can try to do our best, we just put the numbers in and that's it, we don't do anything else, we just put numbers in. Um, also, um, today was quite busy for us, um. We, um, I got, um, I'm not gonna say the H B A C, but he came by uh, reference to uh, on the agenda for apartment one oh seven. You do not have to pay for the new heat pump, which is five thousand dollars, you do not have to pay. So I had this guy from H B A C um, to come by, um, and so it's a leak in her heat pump. And so he is going to um, check that out to see what it is, um, but the new heat pump is not in the question at all. This is what he said, so we wait till he comes back and see what he says. Um, units eighty-five and eighty-six, um, they thought they had to get a new heat pump and they did not. Um, the problem was the filters were filthy and they were not clean. So this is the problem that we have and so when there, when you put the heat on and it's not coming out heat, but by like loop warm, is because the filters are not clean. So I spoke with um, the H B A C and see they could come by to do a cleaning. Um, the monies is less than heat shock. So um, I have the contract um, to sign and for that to start. A lot of residents are asking, when is the cleaning gonna start for their heat pumps? And so I think we should get this on the roll and because um, you know, the winter time is, we're almost done, spring is coming, but I know for sure if those two residents uh, filters were filthy, I know the others are the same. Okay, so we have to um, get these filters cleaned um, to keep up the maintenance with that.
Yeah, we can't put them off any longer.
And are these like replaceable disposable filters? Or these are actual filters that have to be washed and reinstalled?
That's correct, that's correct.
Washed and reinstalled.
Yes.
And um, actually, when I was there with, because I went with the individuals to um, see what was wrong with the heat pumps, he actually recommended they be clean more than once a year. Um, but I did explain to the tenant that once a year, T H J is um, responsible to do that based on the contract that we signed. I said, if you have a family member, it's very easy, we showed her how um, to take apart the filters, because it's an easy pull down. Um, I said, or if you're feeling like the air isn't blowing enough, you can always call for the guys to check. And our maintenance man sometimes will just check the filter and see that that's the issue, but T H J will have a contract to clean it once a year.
And I think that's why Tri-City had recommended the twice a year, even though we can't afford it, but because they know it needs to be cleaned more often than once a year.
That's correct.
Right, right.
That's correct.
That's why we opt for once a year and not twice, because it is so, no matter who you get, it's expensive.
Uh, Mark Hiller came by as already mentioned, um, with the monies, the nineteen K. Uh, we spoke to Mark and also we had a meeting with myself, Renee Dawn and also um, Jackie to um, try to um, make some changes in the old units. The old units have not been touched since um,
They were built.
Until they were built, that's correct. And so therefore, we are going to touch those units first, just like the floors. Um, maybe a new faucet, uh, a vanity, cat mist, we're gonna fix, because right now they are um, the wear and tear is, is unbelievable. And so right now, we're gonna touch um, those units and um, we have, he says he's gonna give us a price concerning that. Now, the price he gave us before that Jackie has, he's gonna keep to those, to those prices right there. So um, which is a good thing. So we're gonna work, hopefully he'll get the um, To those prices right there, so um, which is a good thing. So we're gonna work, hopefully he'll get the um. The new ones, the new, um, we gave him one oh six, then we gave him some, two others. So once we get those prices, then we can get um, Mark ongoing to get, to work on these units, okay, as soon as possible. Um, also, as you know, the um, the bathrooms in the community room, they are not working at all. So the staff, we have to go to somewhere, go to the bathroom around here to an empty unit. Or to the um, you know, to the laundry rooms and um, to choose um, the bathrooms. Um, so uh, the, the thing is Dawn made some phone calls, because Dawn knows everybody in town, um, town hall. In the town of Trumbull, so she made a few phone calls and she, we got someone and then, of course, um, Kevin Bova was a great help. So we got someone to come out, um, his name was Norm, um, from the Nagy Brothers. And what he did, he dug behind number fifty, that's where the problem is, number fifty. And when we had the rehab back when, um, it, it, the thing is. The other E D told the um, the construction person to have a new pipe. Connected to the old pipe. So that's why the, the pipe now, which I have seen on the ground, is severed, is cut in half. So that's why we have all these problems in the bathroom. Okay, so they went all the way down, they, they found the problem. Um, A and B came out, um, so they're gonna come out tomorrow to fix it. And hopefully we'll have the bathroom up and running. Okay, um, now the cost of Nagy Brothers, the thing is, I do with the help of Kevin Bova. They just gonna charge us the town of Trumbull charge. And being that this has been an emergency, these bathrooms have been out since December twentieth. Okay, so therefore, when we have programs here, they have to use the bathroom, we're dealing with older adult population, so they need to use the bathroom. So the thing is, um, it's, it's an emergency, it was an emergency, and so that's why we had to go this route. Um, to get the bathrooms fixed.
Um, Paulette, any idea what that contract, what that price is gonna be?
Well, the thing is, um, maybe five hundred dollars, maybe a thousand. But he's gonna, uh, whatever the town of Trumbull chart, he charges the town of Trumbull, that's gonna be out this month.
Okay, so it sounds like it'll fall within your existing budget.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, great.
Um, see, anything else? And reference to my things to do since the last meeting, so the follow-up for the insurance. Um, it's THC, it's under the THA insurance policy. Um, Kathy, I did send you the baller, the baller repair, I sent that to you, um. We worked on the nineteen thousand, that's done, um, the heat pumps, that's done. Um, the start to rent increase was February twenty-first, that's done. Um, reference to, um, and reference to bottom, are they done? Okay, bottom is done at the congregate, okay, they're done. Okay, they gave us a cheat sheet, just in case if anything should um, happen there. I do get my three o'clock in the morning phone calls from USA still. Um, because if something happens there, they give me a little ring-a-ding-ding, three o'clock in the morning. And they say, you and, na 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 na, had, we had to reset. And I said, thank you, and it's hard to get back to sleep, so um, I got.
Have you had to get, had, do any training for the residents on that?
No, not really, because that, um, the reset of the panels and everything, that's in the front, so that's only for staff use only, that's only for staff.
Okay, so there was no impact really on the residents then?
Well, no, no, uh huh, no. Um, and reference to the two suits, um, March twenty-eighth would be my. Uh, other one with the CHRO, March twenty-eighth, we tend to one and the other suit. Um, I have not heard anything reference to that tenant at all, so I'll keep you posted about March twenty-eighth.
Questions for Paulette? Okay, then let's move on to um, the annual audit, I put approval, we don't approve the audit, we accept the audit. Um, everybody had been sent a copy of the audit. Um, so I will entertain a motion to accept the annual audit report.
I'll move, Laurel.
Second?
Second, Charlene.
Okay, any questions on the audit, any discussion of?
Comment, really nicely done.
Yeah.
Staff, um, sounds like we've also found finally an auditor that. Kinda gets us within the parameters required by the state, which is very comforting to know, there are not having delays again.
Through Jason, so Jason gets the credit for this.
I, I did ask Jason offline to um, make one amendment to the audit narrative. And if it can't be done this time, so be it, but for the next time, which was the paragraph in which we're sort of cited. For being over our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar FDIC insured limits in the bank. And we know why that is, because most of our money is held by the state of Connecticut. And if we cannot trust the state of Connecticut to protect our money, then we have greater problems. Um, so I just thought it might be a nice addendum to that paragraph, which almost makes it sound like. The board knows the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar limit, they know it's over and the board doesn't care, and that's not the case. The case is, even from the last audit, the board had discussed it. And so I myself would like it in the narrative, we are aware of it. It's cu- it's held by the state of Connecticut and we sort of don't have to worry about the FDIC.
We can contact Paul from the, the one we deal with, and I can send him an email and follow up with that, okay?
Okay, there was one other thing, Jason, and for the life of me, I can't remember what it was. But um, again, I don't, I don't think it mattered for this one, it was just more, at some point, it should probably be in that. In that narrative.
It was the retirement contributions.
Oh, okay.
Um, it wasn't, it looked like it was a separate policy, right?
Yeah.
Said that, that you guys have a policy and nobody contributes to it. Um, which is not the case, you have a policy or a plan, excuse me, a plan, but there are people contributing and it's not being disclosed. Um, I did tell them this, they never responded, um, I, I honestly didn't push on it, um.
It's not a deal breaker, but if we could please have a change for the next audit. I mean, we know, it's not that it's horrible or not correct, but there's no reason for this board to. Be looked upon disparagingly for something that, you know, come on.
There, Laurel, on their response in the FDIC, um, because I did talk to him, he had called me for something else. Um, I'm going to see if he will put in the additional collateralization comments that we even use in our audits. Um, and, and I told you this, that there are um, additional state requirements. That give you some assurance past the two fifty. Um, he had said, there is a line in there that basically says your position, which is that management believes there's no significant risk exists. It's like the last line of that.
Right.
That's what that's for, saying that it's your belief that there's, there's, you know, no real problem.
I just would like in there, why the board believes that.
Gotcha.
It's not just that, oh, you know, we believe it and we don't care.
Got it.
Jason, do you want me to follow up with Paul then, or since you've already discussed it with him, it's up to you, I don't mind following up with that.
Oh, the only thing I don't wanna do is I don't wanna lose it, I mean, the, the audit's ready to be filed, or it has been filed, I would probably.
Yes.
As I said, next year's fine, I just would like some institutional memory about making sure next time.
Okay, I will note that.
Thank you.
I have a vote on accepting the audit by unanimous consent, we take that?
Bye.
Okay. All right, so Paulette, I don't need to vote to authorize the heat pump, we don't need a heat pump.
That's correct, that's correct.
Um, and we would need to vote on uh, me doing a letter to authorize you to sign leases. For the congregate, so I'm, I'm gonna ask you, are you comfortable at this point? Signing a lease of the congregate, or do we want Paulette still involved in the, in the lease process?
I'm honestly not comfortable at this point.
Okay, all right, then I'm not gonna worry about that at the moment, I'm gonna ask Paulette to still stay involved with the lease signing. Thank you for your honesty on that, I don't wanna put you in an uncomfortable position. Okay, and the update on the insurance with the THC, Paulette spoke about that. The heat pump cleaning update, the old business, um, we're still working on getting somebody in to do that, right? To find somebody.
Oh, we haven't.
We have, we have, listen, I just have to, like I said, Jason, it is twenty-three, so we're signed, because we, let's say, heat pump was twenty-eight. So the money should be there for the new, uh.
You have it, yeah, we haven't touched it.
We haven't touched it.
Okay.
Jason's not answering me, but that's okay.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
That's good.
Um, so, can I go back to THC for one second?
Yes.
Um, I think it would be good if, um, since we're talking about THC, um, once we stop this meeting. If we could go into a THC meeting real quick, literally, it would be two minutes.
Yeah.
I would like it read into the minutes of this meeting, because at the last meeting, we didn't have it. We were talking about, you know, kind of even getting rid of the corporation. So I, if we could have a really quick meeting, read it into the minutes that we do have insurance. And it's no longer an issue, and that's it, and then adjourn. Okay, we don't have to, this, this is not the same as THA, so we didn't need.
We don't need a notice, we don't need.
Notice, no, nothing.
Okay, um, the emergency repair funding request that you were handling, Paulette. At, with the, have we heard anything on?
That's being done.
What, you, you took my bottom?
No, the emergency heat pump.
Oh, that's, that's being done.
Being done, that's the.
Okay.
No, this was, this wa- this wasn't the cleaning. This was to go to the state to get the money to tip, to, to read, to turn all of those units around. Um, that the state won't pay for repair for maintenance, but they would pay for repair. And at one point, there was like, I don't know, what the heck was it, seventy thousand dollars or something we were talking about?
Yeah, go ahead. Um, so I think that there was a discrepancy from one agency to another. So when the HVAC um, bidding hap- process happened, uh, one company said that it had to be tilted. One company did it and another one didn't. So the one that did, that was when we, we thought, when the last one didn't really get back to us. That was in the direction we were swaying towards, because they were offering, um, the twice cleaning, the, all this other stuff. Um, and they were saying that they had to fix the heat pumps to their standards. And that was their suggestion that it had to be tilted and it had to be, but the, yeah. But the um, HVAC people that we're having now, um, that Paulette is talking about. They have not said anything about pitches being done or needing to um, switch things around or anything. They're working to its capacity, it's just the filters and the coils have to be maintained.
Okay, so the, the only challenge with that is, are they still leaking? And therefore causing other hazards within the units? Because I think that's why, you know, this was all during that bigger discussion.
Yeah, yep, and so based on the, the conversation for the last HVAC company, this has nothing. If it's leaking, it's leaking free on, which has nothing to do with the leak or um, damages that are happening. The units are self-inflicted.
Okay, so I think I can at least say for me, and I think Kathy also was under the impression that. We were still thinking we were going to the state to try to get emergency funding for that larger. Tip it upside down, stop it from leaking in the unit, stop the other issues we were having because of the leaking. You know, that kind of thing, so what you're saying now is, it is no longer an issue and we don't need to go to the state for the emergency money.
Well, at this time, no, because the HVAC company that we have do, do not see problems with the heat pumps. If we're, if anything, we're going to the state was for that restoration project that are holding those three units that, um.
Okay.
No, that, the heat pump, they're saying the heat pump, um, wasn't being utilized by our tenants and that's why the situation is happening. But I think that's what we would be going, because that was greater amounts of money to be spent on. And um, our contractors would not touch it because of what's going on in the.
They don't think that they're upside downs?
They don't, no, that was not a conversation and they've been to the owners with me, I actually went with the owner. And I asked them all the questions prior to um, the conversation that Paulette had with the other agency.
Okay, so we're, we are then moving ahead with.
Cleaning.
The, the kind of restoration of the other challenge with this, so we're going to the state for that money?
Yes, for the, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so, have we done that already?
Molded.
Now, because with all the stuff at the congregate, I'm doing conservatorship with probate court. And the thing is, so I will take care of that once the application is done for probate court.
I'm sorry, this is in probate court now?
Oh, no, I have to do something for probate court for one of the residents at the congregate.
So basically, the process has started for that yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Um, okay.
We good?
Yep.
All right, I will ask if there is anybody on that would like to make a public comment?
Um, if any member of the public would like to make a comment, please click the raised hand button at the bottom of your screen and press star nine if you're on the phone. Uh, it does not appear that anyone would like to comment at this time.
Okay, then uh, up, Charlene, it is your turn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second the motion.
Unanimous consent on that one, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.